March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, West Melbourne City Council meeting to order. Please stand with me for the pledge in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting of the City Council. Members of the public are welcome to speak on any tub topic, whether it is on tonight's agenda or on any issue that is important to you. Each person that wishes to speak should complete a speaker card, which are located near the glass doors, and submit it ahead of time to the city clerk. After you have been recognized to speak, please use the microphone at the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. Please address all your comments to the City Council rather than individuals. Direct all questions to the chair. Speakers will be given up to three minutes. Thank you, everyone found their cards? Okay, all right, our first item will be Government Finance Professionals Week. Candace, if you would like to come forward.
Okay, my team.
Candace Blake?
Enteem.
Oh, enteem, yes, of course.
I feel like I'm leaving my little duck wing.
They're shy to get up front.
Thank you for your work.
All right, this is a proclamation. Whereas the Florida Government Finance Officers Association, the FGFOA, is a professional association founded in nineteen thirty-seven and serves more than thirty-three hundred professionals from state, county, and city governments, school districts, colleges, and universities, special districts, and private firms. And whereas the FGFOA is dedicated to being your professional resource by providing opportunities through education, networking, leadership, and information, and whereas the Government Finance Professionals Week, sponsored by the FGFOA and all of its members governmental organization, is a week-long series of activities aimed at recognizing government finance professionals and the vital services that they provide to our state and community. And whereas during this week, Government Finance Professionals throughout the state of Florida will be acknowledged for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the city council of the city of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida hereby proclaim March seventeenth through March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five as Government Financial Professionals Week. And extend our appreciation to all government finance professionals throughout the state and here in the city of West Melbourne for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. Witness my hand and seal this day, this eighteenth day of March two thousand twenty-five. Here we are.
All right, thank you very, very much. Who would like to take it? Enteem. Can all get together here?
Behind you.
Squeeze in.
Can I be behind you?
Yep, there you go.
There you go, squeeze in.
Are you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Did you want to say? Thank you. All right, thank you. Then the next item is, there are no modifications to the enged net, we'll move to public hearings. The proposed rezoning of three parcels totaling forty-four plus or minus acres. Denise, this is your item? Okay.
Are you guys coming up? Are you guys coming first?
You guys, you guys want to go first?
Oh, no, I thought you were just asking me to take a seat.
We're calling you to the front of the class.
Sure everything's on? All right, so this is the Hollywood and Eber Boulevard parcel rezoning. Little background information, the applicants for the, the attorney for the applicants, Mark Watts, to my left here, he will explain the rezoning a little bit more when we're done with our presentation. But the size of the property is forty-four acres. We'll get into the acreage differences as we get into the presentation and a little bit more of the case. But right now it's forty-four acres, the existing use is cattle grazing right now and has been since nineteen ninety. The proposed use, there are no development proposals at this time. The existing future land use that was assigned in nineteen ninety is commercial. The zoning right now is RA, which is residential agricultural, and it's been that way since nineteen ninety. They're proposing a C-one-A professional offices and services district, which is the least intense commercial zoning district that there is. And you can see from the aerial, it's surrounded by Stratford Point, West Melbourne Landings, Manchester Lakes, and then the lakes of Melbourne, which is in Brevard County. The Dollar General that's at the corner of Eber and Hollywood is not in the city, that was developed in the county. So some of the previous action that's happened, in nineteen ninety, the property came in with a large annexation of eleven hundred acres. It was assigned the commercial land use in nineteen ninety, and there's, like I said, they requested the C-one-A, which is consistent with that commercial future land use designation. So on January fifteenth, the Planning and Zoning Board heard the case, and they recommended that council approved the rezoning to C-one-A from the RA. We advertised this public hearing for January twenty-fifth on this, the Brevard County advertisement website, and then we sent out courtesy notices to two-hundred-and-nineteen surrounding property owners. So we received a lot of opposition emails, which you all got copies of, and we distributed, and then we ended up postponing the February eighteenth public hearing to March fourth, and then the March fourth hearing got postponed to March eighteenth. We wanted that extra time to allow the verification of the description, the legal description of the properties, and find out where the discrepancies could be. So that's what we've done previously. So a little bit of explanation about what future land use designation versus zoning is. We have a comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan establishes the long-term vision for the city and how we want land to be developed. The future land use map has the future land use designations, which specific areas have specific land use designations on the future land use map as to where we want properties to develop and how we want them to develop. So the future land use designation, you can kind of think of as like an umbrella, or a larger category of, say, like residential or commercial or industrial. And then the zoning districts fit within those categories or under that umbrella of the future land use designations. So the city has ten of the general land use designations, which we also call future land use map designations, and I'll try to not use all the acronyms and try to explain, sometimes we get into that, but I'll try not to use those, and if I say something that you don't understand, let me know. So there are twenty-one zoning districts. Examples that fit into the commercial is the C-one-A, C-two, and CP, which C-one-A is, like I said, the least intense, which is professional office and services district. C-two is like a general commercial, and then the CP is commercial parkway, which you find along the major roadways. So again, this is the map that you'll see on the left. All the properties in blue were part of that eleven hundred acres that were annexed in the city in nineteen ninety. There were eighteen tracts, each of those tracts are numbered. You can see the track number seven and seven, those are the properties that we're discussing tonight. Everything else around those properties have been developed into those subdivisions that we talked about on the aerial. So in nineteen ninety, since these properties were being used for cattle grazing, they were assigned that residential agricultural zoning district, even though they had that commercial future land use designation. So now the property owners have requested to rezone the property to that C-one-A to match the current commercial future land use designation. So what we did, that extra time that we took to do the comparison, we asked the applicant to go and get their surveyor to compare the nineteen ninety future land use, land description that was in the ordinance with the survey that was submitted for the rezoning today. And this is what happened. When they applied the nineteen ninety comprehensive plan ordinance to these properties, there was a little gap on the north side, there was an acre, one acre, a little over an acre on the north side, that ended up not being part of that comp plan amendment. There was another sliver on the bottom, on the south property, two-point-three acres, that ended up not being in that ordinance. So what we have is the white strips to the north and the south don't have a future land use or zoning on them. So you can see from this map, that's where we have the discrepancy. We have forty-point-six acres, and then approximately, what, two, three, almost four acres that are not zoned with commercial, or not designated as commercial and not zoned as anything. So about ninety-five percent of the property to the north had the correct zoning, I'm sorry, the correct future land use, and ninety percent on the south side had the correct future land use.
I got a quick question for you. Do they still retain the zoning that they had when they were with the county now?
The...
Because typically when land comes over from the county being annexed, it comes with that zoning. I'm just curious if whether that zoning still applies, maybe?
It is, but it's the same zoning as what it's, it's zoned as residential agriculture, it's just they flip it, it's agricultural residential is what it was zoned.
Yeah, so they maintained their county zoning, but when they came in, they got a commercial future land use designation. So as long as...
Talking about this property that's not zoned, but it came over annexed from the county, does it still retain, was it agricultural when it came over from the county, or did it have a mix?
Yeah, so if a, if a property is annexed into a city and doesn't get a designation for whatever reason, it would maintain the county's zoning, however, they can't get a building permit or do any other development until they get city zoning.
That's what I'm asking. What did it come over to the county with?
Agricultural residential.
Yeah, and you can refer back to that track table that's on this slide to find that out. So I'll go back to this slide. All right, so as I said, ninety-five percent of the property on the north side has that commercial future land use, and ninety percent of the property on the south side has that future commercial land use. So what we're asking, the rezoning request for option A, there's two options that we're going to present. The first option that you can see is before, they have the residential agricultural on both north and south properties. This is what it would look like if you were to do the whole forty-four acres with the C-one-A on the north and south side. So the applicant is requesting that you rezone the entire property to C-one-A, the whole forty-four acres, and then the next public hearing would be on April second for the final reading of the ordinance. The second option would be option B. So as you can see, the map doesn't change on the left side, they still have that RA zoning on both the north and the south, but the difference would be that the ninety and ninety-five percent properties would be C-one-A, and then the remaining strips on the north, which is the strip here, and the south, which is the strip here, would be given a future zoning of residential and the land use designation as residential in the future. So there's two options, option A and option B. And the applicant is here to present some more information.
Thanks, Denise. I think I've got a presentation that'll come up as well. Do I use the clicker to go through it, or the? Perfect. Thank you. Good evening. For the record, I'm Mark Watts, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Cobb Cole, and my address is two-thirty-one North Woodland Boulevard, Deland. Appreciate the opportunity to be down here with you this evening, appreciate the time that we've spent working with your staff. I think that Denise's presentation really kind of goes over the majority of it, I'm going to give a little bit more background and perspective from the landowner and the applicant's perspective. So, you know, as, as staff has presented, you know, the overall site is, you know, at the intersection of Hollywood and Eber. The interesting thing with this is, you know, there's a long history here. You know, the family corporations that own the property, you know, as indicated, has came into the city with the property, about eleven hundred acres in nineteen ninety. And at the time, there was, you know, kind of a master planning effort that went along with that. You saw the map of the different eighteen parcels that, you know, came in, were annexed in, and assigned future land uses at that time, that really kind of took into account, you know, what the future development pattern would be for the overall properties. And in fact, around this site, a lot of the land that is now residential was part of that annexation, was part of that original planning, and was brought in with the residential uses in place for what you see now with regard to the subdivisions. But I think from a good planning standpoint, you always want to plan that neighborhood commercial use, you know, in close proximity to residential areas. So beginning in nineteen ninety, these corners were assigned that commercial land use classification, and have always been intended and planned to be commercial, commercial development in the future. So again, that's kind of that prioritization of the long-term planning that occurred, you know, when that annexation was done in nineteen ninety. The existing zoning, the RA zoning allows basically for the agricultural uses or a single-family residential, but we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. Neighborhood commercial really intended to support the residents that live in that specific area. They're not intended to draw residents from other areas, but they're intended to kind of shorten the time that people spend on the roads and in their cars, going to those daily service type uses that most people that live in the adjacent neighborhoods would need. So again, looking at the current land use and zoning, on the left you see the current land use map, this is, you know, taken from, from the maps on your websites. The current, you know, land use is commercial. So we've got a commercial land use, and we've got a residential agricultural zoning that's inconsistent with that land use. So under Florida law, that means we really don't have the ability to come in and ask for permits for, you know, residential uses and residential building permits and development because it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. So when we started working with your staff, we looked at what the available commercial land uses were, and C-one-A was the one we selected because it's basically the lowest intensity commercial land use that you have that's consistent with that existing, I'm sorry, zoning that you have that's consistent with that existing land use classification. The types of uses that C-one-A allows, office, professional medical offices, studios, you know, fitness studios, gyms, things of that nature, business and professional services, bookstores, retail supply stores, conditional uses like restaurants, you've got financial institutions, coffee shops, things of that nature. Again, if you think about this on the neighborhood scale, it's the things that you'd want to be able to have in close proximity to your residential neighborhood. Now, when we were here back in February, it's interesting, we got asked this question, and I've been doing this for, I think this is my twenty-seventh year now with the firm, I've never had this issue come up. I've never had an issue come up where, you know, we went back and looked at the, you know, there was a question raised about the legal description from the original zoning class, or the original comp plan amendments, and whether or not there was, you know, any issue with it. So it was an interesting exercise to go back and look at it, but we, we did go back and look at ordinance ninety dash twenty-eight, that's the ordinance that the city adopted with all of the land use map amendments that you saw when the property annexed in, and had our surveyor go back and plot them out on the existing surveys that we have for the property, and then provided that survey along with the certification, you know, of his findings with regard to the ordinance and its applicability, you know, with regard to the property that was covered by ninety twenty-eight. And as that, as Denise, you know, indicated in her presentation, what we found was, you know, there's these small gaps. So the legal description for the north, the property north of Eber, there was about a forty-five or fifty-foot gap between the description of the area that was designated as commercial and the northern boundary of the property. And on the parcel south of Eber, there was about a hundred-foot gap between the southern boundary of the property described in ordinance ninety twenty-eight and the southern property line. Now, your comp plan has policy ten-point-one that says the boundary line, lines of land use designation indicated on the future land use map approximately follow platted lots and property lines unless part of the property's been annexed into city limits. Where a future land use designation boundary as shown on the map divides a lot, which was under single ownership at the time that the two thousand and ten comp plan adoption, a boundary line is considered to be running along with the property line. And that's one of the reasons why I think you've got the, what staff presented as, you know, two options tonight with regard to the rezoning. One is, you know, apply the requested rezoning to the entire parcel based on the comp plan policy that the entire parcel, based on the maps that you've adopted, was included in that commercial designation. And the alternative is that we kind of treat those gap areas as something that we still need to address and determine at a later point what the comp plan, whether it came in, it still has the county's designation from nineteen ninety on it, because you're right, the, you know, law says that when you annex property in, you're required to assign it a future land use classification, you know, from the, in the city. But until you do, the county regulations still continue to apply. So that's the alternative that has been outlined is, you know, that you would basically apply the rezoning to those portions that were covered by the description in ninety twenty-eight. Again, so just to kind of look at those gaps, you know, again, you've got the narrower gap on the north, the larger gap on the south. One of the things that we looked at, we asked our surveyor to basically help us explain where that was, you know, where that gap came from. And one of the things that he noted was that different reference points were used. In one case, you've got, you know, sometimes you're doing a legal description, you reference the section line, and others you reference, you know, kind of the boundaries of existing platted subdivisions that may be in the vicinity. And so basically, it was the reference to the section line with regard to the description in the ninety twenty-eight ordinance. If you look on the right-hand side, the description of the area covered by the commercial classification amendment that was done in nineteen ninety actually covers Eber. So it shifted south, and it shifted north, and covered the area that's in the right-of-way based on plotting those descriptions. So it's a little bit of an academic exercise with regard to kind of how that occurred, but we did get the surveyor to go through and kind of certify the footprint of the ninety twenty-eight ordinance, and then also kind of the justification, the reasoning why there was a difference. So moving forward, you know, we're here tonight asking you to apply a zoning that is consistent with the land use. You know, as Florida law states, you know, you're required to be consistent with your land use classification. So we've asked and tried to work with your staff, there are no specific plans for the property at this point in time, but we want to be able to define the uses that are permitted there under your zoning classifications so that we can begin developing plans that will then ultimately come back forward, both to your staff and to, you know, Planning Board in this body for future review and approval. So I think that's the end of what I had to present to you. I'm here to answer any questions, my partner Jessica Gao is here as well, she's been working on this, so if we've got any, if you've got any questions that we can answer, I understand you may have some folks here to speak, if we can reserve a few minutes to come back up and respond to any of their questions as well.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, do you want a question before we? All right.
Mr. Watts?
Yes, sir.
From what I hear you saying, you agree with the presentation that was given by the city and how the surveyor turned over and the zoning discrepancies and that are out there now, right?
Correct. We agree that there is gaps based on... We agree that there is gaps based on that discrepancy.
Okay. Can you tell me whether you discussed with your client whether the property will be used for live local or not? Just discussion?
We have, we don't have any intended future use for the property at this point in time.
So it hasn't been discussed?
We don't have any plan for the property at this point.
So you're not gonna answer my question? Okay. That's all I have for questions. Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing. We're going to hear from the residents, however. I have two other.
I was gonna ask.
Okay. All right, Ms. Adams.
I'm okay waiting. If we want to let the public speak first, and then I can ask my questions.
All right. Thank you. Yes, public hearing. We will hear from Kristin Kavanaugh, followed by Brandon Shannon and Robert Aldridge.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members.
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kristin Kavanaugh, and I live at sixteen thirty-seven Alaco Way in Melbourne, Florida. I'm a resident of West Melbourne and a lifelong resident of Brevard County. I work for a local nonprofit that supports individuals with disabilities, and like many of my neighbors, I care deeply about the long-term health and success of our community. As someone who works to serve and advocate for vulnerable populations, I understand thoughtful planning can either strengthen or strain a community's quality of life. That's why responsible development matters and why developer agreement is essential. While I respect the property owner's right to develop their land, responsible development is about balance, aligning private interests with the well-being of the surrounding community, and strong developer agreement is what creates that balance. I understand that due to decisions that were made over thirty years ago, the city may be legally bound to approve this rezoning, but what happens next is still within our control. That's why this land is developed, will shape our neighborhoods for decades, and is in everyone's best interest to ensure responsible, community-focused growth. A well-structured development agreement creates stability and predictability for all parties. It helps prevent future disputes, ensures infrastructure keeps up with growth, and guarantees that this development is something residents will support rather than resist. We are asking for reasonable, mutually beneficial protections such as setbacks and buffers to protect the privacy of existing homes, traffic impact studies and infrastructure contributions to prevent congestion and overburdened roads, green space requirements that enhance the area without major financial burden to the property owner, height and density restrictions that go beyond the minimum standards of the Live Local Act, because what is technically allowed is not always what is best for the community. While the Live Local Act does set limits on height and density, we believe that these standards alone are not sufficient to preserve the character of this area. Additional restrictions should be considered to ensure that the development complements not overwhelms our neighborhoods. These are not extreme demands. They're standard best practices in responsible urban planning. They help avoid unnecessary conflict, lawsuits, or costly infrastructure failures down the road. To the property owner and their legal team, I want to say this, you have an opportunity to show goodwill and work with the city and the residents to make this project a success for everyone. A developer agreement does not prevent progress. It ensures that progress happens in a way that earns communities the support and avoids resistance. To the council members, you have the ability to advocate for this agreement before finalizing any approvals. Please make it clear that a responsible negotiated agreement is the best path forward for all involved. Tonight, the property owner and their legal team has asked you to use practical sense in exercising the rezoning of the entire property versus what is legally required as discovered by the surveyors, and I hope they're going to extend that same grace to the city of West Melbourne. Thank you all for your time, and I look forward to hearing the response.
Thank you. Brandon, is it Schuman or Shannon?
Shannon.
Shannon, thank you.
My name is Brandon Shannon. I live at seventeen forty-five Litchfield Drive in West Melbourne. Good afternoon, members of the City Council. I stand before you today in opposition to the proposed rezoning of properties from residential agricultural to commercial, C-1A. While I understand the need for growth and development, this change raises serious concerns that could negatively impact our community. The Live Local Act was passed in Florida in 2023 to encourage affordable housing development by allowing developers to bypass certain local zoning restrictions. Under this law, if a portion of a project includes affordable workforce housing, developers can override local zoning rules and build high-density apartment complexes in commercially-zoned areas without requiring additional approval from the city. This means that once the land is rezoned to C-1A, developers could use this loophole to construct large apartment, large apartment buildings regardless of the original intent behind the rezoning. The council residents would have little say in stopping such projects once the zoning changes in place. We've already been, we've already seen examples of poor planning and inadequate infrastructure improvements in our community. When the Dollar General, for example, was added, the only road change was a slightly extended turning lane. There was no added capacity to accommodate increased traffic. Flooding is already a major issue in parts of Manchester Lakes specifically, and paving over agricultural land will only worsen rain off, rainwater runoff, increasing the risk of property damage. Additionally, north-south traffic during rush hours before and after work hours overburdens the current road structure with heavy congestion. Adding high-density housing and associated traffic will only exacerbate these issues, making commuters, commutes longer and more frustrating for residents. Our roads are already congested and struggling to support existing traffic. Adding a large influx of residents without first improving infrastructure will lead to safety hazards, longer commutes, and a diminished quality of life for everyone in this area. Additionally, high-density housing developments can reduce nearby home values and alter the character of our neighborhoods. Many of us have moved here because of the open spaces and residential stability, changing that dynamic without careful planning risks, turning a well-balanced community into an overburdened one. Instead of rezoning for commercial use, I urge the council to consider alternatives that would benefit the community as a whole. This land could serve as a public park, community center, or even a conservation area, providing much-needed green space and recreational opportunities for families in the area. These options would enhance the quality of life for our residents rather than erode it, offering a long-term investment in the well-being of our community rather than prioritizing short-term development interests. We are not against development, but we must ensure that growth is responsible and sustainable. Before approving any rezoning, I urge the council to conduct thorough impact studies on traffic, property values, infrastructure capacity. We need a clear plan that prioritizes existing residents' needs, not just developers' interests. I ask you to listen to the voices of this community and consider the long-term consequences of this decision. Let's work together to find solutions that balance growth with preserving the quality of life that makes this area so special. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Your waddle, bro.
Robert Aldridge, followed by Eva Nagamaholy and Taylor Davis.
Mayor of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Robert Aldridge. I live at thirteen thirty-seven Alaco Way, West Melbourne Landings. To say that this process has been an education to a non-government official is the understatement of the year. Several of us have been involved in this since we first found out about this and have had an education that we don't necessarily like. We realize that based on something that was done in nineteen ninety, which the developers' representatives have represented as proper planning, could not have been proper planning because the developers in nineteen ninety could not have estimated the density and traffic that occurs in those areas, could not have estimated the populations and the houses and the house density in nineteen ninety, as every one of those neighborhoods around the corner was built long after that. Okay? So to say that this is a planning and a well-planned organization and operation is a fallacy. I know through our education that the City Council is not allowed to consider certain things, and in certain ways, the City Council has their hands tied due to the future land use of commercial planning, and that they're not allowed to take into account certain things like traffic, or noise, or our quality of life as the people that own those properties around it. They are not allowed to consider our property values as individuals. So I'm gonna make this plea to the City Council to protect our city. This is a situation where we have people coming forward with no plan to do anything. When directly asked about the plans, I had a very similar reaction to Mr. Frampis's reaction when you go, "Have you talked about Live Local?" And what the zoning does, it opens up to the very thing so many governmental agencies are facing right now, which is getting their hands tied. To a certain degree, your hands tied were tied in nineteen ninety. By shifting this zoning to commercial, you again tie your hands to control anything that happens within your city borders. By the Live Local Act, once it's zoned commercial, you're done. We're done. We are the victims and at the whim of developers that don't even live in this county. What we need to do is look out for ourselves. You as City Council, as a citizen of this city, I ask you to protect your authority to regulate these. To the developer statements about shortening times, and I know I've got about ten seconds left, shortening times, does it really shorten the time when my drive time to go from my neighborhood to that corner gets increased by five minutes when Walmart and professional developments are right around the corner? That's my time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Eva Nagamaholy, and I live at thirty-four thirteen Willowood Drive. Everything he said is what I'm saying, so I will make mine much shorter. But at this point in time, since the only plan these people have who own it, whichever the developers are, is to sell it. And that's what they admitted to. They're selling the property, and they would like, because you do get more money if you know that what you're zoning it for. But you can also sell land at this and say the future designation is commercial, that person may have a plan, and then it should come before us. But just to gain them more money for a sale is inappropriate and too soon because of Live Local, and that keeps coming up. I know in my civics classes and history and life experiences, governments higher up have higher authority. So therefore, you could make an agreement for the land. You could say that you cannot go for Live Local, but you can't, because the higher up can change it. So wait till you know what's going to happen, and if they want to rezone it as residential, then that would be great. But right now, knowing that the traffic is bad, knowing that it can be, housing, apartment buildings definitely would be a wrong thing to do for this beautiful city and for its residents. So prematurely, don't do anything. Thank you.
I don't think I have to do that.
All right. Thank you. Joshua Hampton, followed by Melissa Mazon and Natalie Morgivan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, and the Karossi family representatives. My name is Joshua Hampton. I live at sixteen thirty-seven Alaco Way over on West Melbourne Landings. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I understand that due to the nineteen ninety future commercial zoning designation, the city may be legally obligated to approve rezoning of these parcels from agricultural residential to C-1A commercial. While we recognize these constraints, we also share a deep concern about the potential impacts of the Live Local Act, which could facilitate high-density housing that does not align with our community's needs. Our city has changed considerably since nineteen ninety, and we need zoning that reflects today's realities and future goals. With that in mind, I respectfully appeal to both the city and the Karossi family's representatives to consider alternative zoning options more suited for our evolving community. For instance, shifting some or all of the property to low-density residential or institutional use, such as a park, conservation area, fire station, or other public facility, would help address the density and infrastructure issues while maintaining the balance between responsible development and preserving West Melbourne's neighborhood character in this residential area. Should the rezoning proceed, I urge you to honor commitments from the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number Two regarding Track Seven, which defines the commercial, which defines commercial explicitly as town-center commercial with pedestrian orientation and low-intensity uses and a maximum of four dwelling units per acre for residential development while explicitly disallowing strip commercial. If denial of rezoning is truly not an option, a mutually beneficial developer agreement should be considered to ensure mandated buffer zones, green and open space requirements, noise and visual barriers, and appropriate density limitations. These measures would protect residents and the community's quality of life while providing security for both the city and the owner's interests. Finally, I encourage the Karossi family and their representation to consider cooperation with the city, whether through partial land sale for public amenities or other creative solutions that yield both tax benefits and community enhancements. We deeply value your property rights and hope to work together for a mutually beneficial outcome. Thank you for your time and your commitment to balancing private property interests with the public good for West Melbourne. Thanks.
Thank you. Melissa Mazon.
You know, I was wondering, can we go back a couple?
Can you speak into the microphone? We can't hear you.
So I'm here. My name is Melissa Mazon. I live at seventeen seventeen Alaco Way. And is it possible that we can just kind of go back a couple?
Which presentation did you want?
I think this is the one that had for C-1 what the options were, restaurants, fitness centers, stuff like that. And I thank everybody for their time.
There you go.
Offices, studios, businesses, bookstores. Yeah, yeah, that one. Okay, I am going to concur also to this gentleman, and I think everybody in here loves West Melbourne and says they wouldn't be here right now. It is a very special place. I know your hands are tied as far as the traffic goes, but you all do have the power to vote tonight, and I'm asking you, please. West Melbourne is so charming, and it has changed since nineteen ninety. I moved in here in twenty twelve, November. Going to Walmart, everything has grown, the fitness center, the hotels, Hooters, we've got so much stuff going on. And the thing, when I was driving off of Dairy Road and I turned into Eber this evening, and there's three real estate properties for sale, and you know that's gonna be housing probably, the thing that amazes me is that Eber and Hollywood is only two lanes, that's it, and it's on a corner. The consequences that we would, how that would impact us, and especially during rush hour traffic, really? Oh my gosh, it would be stressful. So I'm asking you, please, please, it's in your hands. It's not our hands. We're pleading, but please, consider not to rezone, and especially, you know, again, it's out of your all's hands, but the wildlife, there's a bald eagle in there. I mean, that is so cool. So I'm asking you, please, if you can just think about the vote and the consequences. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mazon. Natalie Morgivan.
My name is Natalie Morgivan. I live at thirty-two oh one Watergrass Street in West Melbourne. However, I actually bought my first house in Manchester Lakes. I still do own that house as well. So my big concern for all this, obviously, is even though I don't reside there anymore, I still am, wasn't it, West Melbourne? I do drive through the area. Obviously, I still maintain that home as well. So I think I have a little bit of a vested interest. One thing I would like to point out is this gentleman right here, he has said that the commercial usage, or the development of commercial usage, excuse me, usage, is what is best for the city, right? However, clearly, what's best for the city is not being represented. He is the only one saying that. He's not from in-town. All of the local residents here, nobody wants it to be developed for commercial. What's best for the city, what's best for the residents, is clearly not what's in his best interest and his clients. I would just like to point out that what he's saying, or what, you know, what's going on, you have all this opposition here. I have not heard anyone else stand up. There's nobody here standing up that wants it commercial, right? So I don't think that what this gentleman stands for is anything that the residents here of West Melbourne stand for. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgivan. Are there any more speaker cards, Megan? Is there anyone out there who wanted to speak and did not fill out a speaker card? Please come forward, sir. State your name and address.
Hi, my name is John Daddie. I live at one-two-eight-seven. I live at 1287 Alakua Way. I did not plan to speak, but after what I've heard, I feel I need to. We bought our house in 2010. We were told by Adams Home that we live on the preserve and that would not be built. Nothing was going to be there. And that's one of the reasons we chose it, because we didn't want somebody on our, looking at their backyard and ours. Before we moved to West Melbourne, we came from San Diego. We lived in Huntington Beach, which is in Orange County. We live in San Diego County. I hate to tell you this, but you folks are turning to the West Coast. The traffic is awful. It used to not be that way in 2010. It's getting worse by the day. I have seen the traffic back up from Eber all the way to 192, and now it's backing up from Hollywood all the way down Eber to Dairy and beyond. And if anything happens on the freeway, we all know what happens. My wife and I have been talking about it. We got a Realtor. My house went on the market today. It will be officially on the market within 21 days. Because I've seen what you're doing, I see what's happening. They say that nothing's going to be developed. My concern is that what's going to be developed are those apartments that are right across the freeway from Walmart. And unfortunately, we're going to have to move because we're not going to wait. Because what appears that's going to happen, it's only going to get worse. And I really am sorry that you guys are doing this. You're really turning this beautiful city into the West Coast, California. And having lived there, it's one of the reasons we moved away, because the traffic, the whole living conditions there are bad. What you're doing here, I'm afraid, is going to reflect what's going on in the West Coast. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I close the public hearing, is there anyone else who wants to speak? Once I close the public hearing, it will, the board will be discussing. Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Thank you for letting me speak without filling out a card. My name is Darlene McAtier. I live at 1291 Old Bailey Lane. And unfortunately, my beautiful backyard now backs up to a bright yellow sign that says Dollar General. That has absolutely diminished my property value already. I can't imagine what, once the zoning has become C1 commercial, with no development plan, anything can be done. We have no idea. This gentleman said his clients are not developing this land. They're planning to sell it. There is no way to know what is going to go in there once it's developed. There are lots of choices. So please, we voted you in office. We trust you. Please do the best you can for West Melbourne. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I think, is there anyone else? All right, the public hearing is closed. All right, council, Ms. Adams. Did you, did you want to, I'm sorry, you did this, right? You have an opportunity to rebut, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, just a couple of points and a couple of things to clarify. We often hear, no matter what community we're in, about traffic and infrastructure and how you plan for those things. One of the things that, when you're here, you know, when you're dealing with land development law in Florida, you know, you start with the comprehensive plan and then your zoning has to be consistent with the comp plan. And then the implementation of those things is through your land development regulations and your concurrency requirements and things of that nature. Rezoning property doesn't exempt you from those processes. In fact, it puts you into those processes. So with regard to things like traffic, with regard to things like concurrency, school impacts, sewer and water impacts, fire service impacts, those are all things that have to be examined as you move forward with the proposed development of property. I said several times, there are no current plans for this property. We're simply here asking to change the zoning to be consistent with the land use so we can begin planning. Our client doesn't have a plan to sell the property. They don't have a plan to not sell the property. They don't have a plan to develop it or not develop it. They're simply trying to have the land use and the zoning be consistent so they can begin developing what their plans will be for it, whether it's to be sold or whether it's to be developed by our client. We're not asking for any, you know, exception. Your process provides for your buffers, it provides for your landscape requirements, it provides for all the details that you can also uncover through a development agreement. In fact, we've talked with your staff about doing a development agreement or the need for a development agreement. And our response to them has simply been, we're not opposed to doing that. We just don't know what the property will develop as yet. And so without knowing that, we need to be able to, you know, kind of know that and to be able to define what would be proper in a development agreement. With regard to traffic, I've heard the same conversations. I worked with both this landowner and the CBL Corporation many years ago when Hammock Landing was developed. We helped build Norfolk Parkway as part of the planning for that. I think the, our clients here have a long history of trying to work with communities and, you know, plan for infrastructure as land develops, whether it's planning for road corridors, planning for the construction of those roads. I think that's something that's, you know, consistently happened. I'll give you a little personal history. You know, in the mid-1980s, my dad, who was a land use attorney, was partners with a guy named Sam Owens. Sam, in 1980s, began representing the Karossi family. So since that time, I've been around the members of the family, their representatives, the planning that has occurred. And I think in every jurisdiction, you know, Port Orange and Daytona and Brevard County, West Melbourne, I think they've had a consistent track record of working to make sure that infrastructure needs are met and that things are planned well. In fact, we have a call or a meeting next week specifically with the county to talk about Hollywood. Because Hollywood, you know, the county has plans for the expansion. They've got 100% plans for the widening of Hollywood. In order to accommodate that widening, they need to work with our client on this property for additional right-of-way, for additional stormwater. We're sitting down with them next week to talk through where those ponds would be located, how they'd be designed, whether they would be, you know, joint-use ponds so that they could be, you know, maintained by, you know, private interests that may want it to look a little bit nicer than what you would typically see with a road retention pond. So we're not here asking to be exempted from any of those requirements. In fact, your codes require those things as we move forward. We've had conversations with your staff. We know that there, you know, is an interest in a fire station location here. We're absolutely open to having those conversations. We think that's part of planning well for a community. You have those needs. If you make the decision to bring your fire services in-house and you need that station site, we've talked to your staff, your city manager, your planning director, your attorney about sitting down to talk about where those locations could be. So I think those are all things that we're open to and fully intend to continue working with the city moving forward. With regard to things like the eagle that are on the property that's been referenced in some of the comments, we know that those are, there are specific guidelines and regulations that apply to how you develop property, whether it's gopher tortoises or scrub jays or eagles, we have to comply with each of those things as we move forward. One of the speakers said, you know, that I'm the only one up here advocating for this. Your planning board recommended approval because it's what the law requires. Your zoning and your comprehensive plan are to be consistent. Your staff is also recommending approval based on that, on the same tenet, that legally under Florida law, you know, we're here asking for the minimum necessary to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Now, live local has been, you know, raised many times. And just to give you a little bit of perspective, I think I sat down with Sam Owens and some of the family representatives about four years ago to start looking at, you know, how do we transition, you know, us working on some of the properties that they have, you know, in Brevard County and Volusia County. And that was before there was a live local. And at that time, our conversations here were, we need to take this property and move it into a commercial zoning so it's consistent with the land use, because that's long been the plan based on the 1990 annexation and the 1990 land use classification that was assigned. We don't control what the legislature does. It's, you know, live local is a fact. I still maintain, we don't have any plan with regard to the development of the property, but we will be transparent with you as we move forward with regard to what will occur. Our request is, and has been from the time we came in and sat down with your staff, what's the minimal commercial zoning classification that can be applied here to be consistent with the land use so that we can begin making more concrete plans for moving forward with the property? So I'm here to answer any questions you might have. I appreciate your time this evening.
And thank you. Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple notes as I've been making, but first, I just want to address the residents. You guys took the time, so thank you for taking the time to get more educated on city issues and rezoning processes. That takes just a lot of commitment and you showed up tonight. So thank you. We appreciate you. Secondly, Mr. Watts, we as a council have the responsibility to respect private property rights while also preserving our resident, both current and future, quality of life. So it's with that responsibility in mind that I'm bringing forward my questions for your consideration. It's my understanding that the original plan for these properties, being the intersection to be zoned commercial, was to develop a commercial center, like a town center. And if you look at maps of West Melbourne now, that shopping plaza type idea has been moved multiple intersections south. So what had been proposed at that time really is no longer there, being as that property has been bought and developed into primarily single-family homes, many of which the residents who showed up tonight live in. So knowing that, would you consider residential zoning for any section of the property in order to be congruent with the surrounding neighborhoods? It would provide them a buffer? It would provide more single-family homes? Would that be something you would entertain?
Not at this time. It's based on the fact that in 1990, when the comp plan was adopted for this area, it adopted both the residential around it, that was also on property that was part of that 1,100 acres, and this commercial node. So, you know, I think that, number one, residential's not consistent with the current land use on the property. So, you know, I think that's the, you know, that's kind of the crux of the issue here is that we have that existing commercial land use is what we're working with. With regard to kind of the future planning and the shifting of those plans over time and the town center is moving elsewhere and everything else, I think your commercial land use and your zoning classification, well-defined kind of commercial nodes that can be dispersed. And I think that's another aspect of good planning is that, you know, you don't just have one location that has, you know, the commercial uses that are going to serve a residential area. I live in a downtown area. I live in downtown Delant. There are multiple places that I can walk from my house that, you know, are, you know, commercial areas. They're not always, they're not necessarily in the same location or the same direction. I think good planning provides for kind of the distribution of some of those uses throughout a community so that here, the types of uses that you have under C1A, lower intensity, low, you know, more neighborhood-centric commercial uses are kind of the appropriate thing to have at an intersection like this so that you don't require vehicular trips for all of your commercial needs.
And I hear you. And some of the residents have brought up the Dollar General is there and really that's your main commercial section, other than the residential, and that location is county property, so they didn't come into West Melbourne. But the rest of that area is definitely residential, single-family homes, correct?
That's definitely true. And it's, you know, at a major intersection, which is why I think that you saw the original planning that took place back in 1990 with regard to the property. You know, obviously, something that develops in the county that's adjacent, you don't have control over. You have your zoning and your regulations and your staff to implement, you know, the rules that you have in place. And so our intent is to work with your staff to implement those under your regulations to bring forward appropriate uses, you know, for this property in this location, given its proximity to the existing residential.
So you've brought up a lot of potential or we're open to, but just listening from my side, I don't hear a lot of commitment on your end, which I understand is not required for the current request coming forward. However, you have heard the concerns and the fears of the residents who live there. So with that in mind, is there any flexibility in committing to donating a portion of the property, since it was identified for a potential location for a fire station, in that it could be used for institutional zoning, be it for a park, a fire station, something that the city could use?
Yeah. We, I think we're, as I said, we're completely open to that. We don't know.
I hear open. Could you commit?
We can commit that we will work with your staff to identify those locations.
That's not what I asked.
Of a three-acre parcel or a five-acre parcel that you need for the fire station at this point in time. I also know that you're still working on whether or not that's going to be, you know, a decision that you make to move to your, you know, internal fire services. Well, I think we've been consistent with your planning staff and your management staff is, as we move forward, as those needs are identified, we will work with you to figure out how they fit within the property. I think that's the responsible thing to do as an owner of lots of property within a jurisdiction. You know, I think when you own multiple parcels in a jurisdiction, you know, you have to partner with that community in order to be able to move forward and address needs because you have more land that ultimately will be coming back. So we're meeting with the county on Monday to talk about where their stormwater ponds will go. We're happy to meet with your staff to figure out where fire stations and things of that nature will go. I don't think we have enough information to say it's going to go in this location yet, but I think we can certainly work on that with your staff as we move forward with the property.
I think if you'd be willing to commit, we would be flexible on where that location could be.
And I think we've said, I think, you know, through the process, we will work with you to find that. We understand that was ranked, I think, the number one site or the number two site for a fire station. So we understand that's a community need. We will absolutely work with your staff to figure out where it goes.
All right. I guess that's the closest I will get.
But I can't, I can't say, I mean, yes, we will work with your staff to identify a location for a fire station and figure out if this is the appropriate property for it, how it would fit into the plan.
Well, I believe the conversation around the fire study was, at least from this council's perspective, if we have something zoned institutional, it could be a park, it could be a fire station, should we choose to go that route. But if we choose not to have our own fire station, still having the availability of making it something the community can use would be a benefit to the city.
Yeah. And again, we are completely open to those conversations with your staff as we move forward.
Your client has expressed an interest, at least from what you've shared with us, that the plan is ultimately to figure out their plan forward, which could include selling it. Would you consider selling a portion of the property to the city? If you're not choosing to donate it, could the city then purchase it for something like institutional zoning?
I think we are always open to those conversations. I mean, you know, I think the answer to that is yes. You know, we are happy to have that conversation with your staff with regard to selling a portion of the property, donating it. Typically, when we work with communities on a fire station site or things of that nature, a lot of times there are impact fee credits that result from that. So I think there's a lot of opportunity and options there. You know, I don't know, again, without a specific plan on the property, it's hard to identify where that location would be and everything else, but I'm confident that we can work through those details as a plan for the site develops.
You've had some discussion, both from residents but also with staff, in regards to a developer agreement. Would you consider entering into that developer agreement with a commitment of that lower development in regards to items specifically like dentists, vets, office buildings, where it identifies, you know, you guys have the list on your PowerPoint of the things that can go there, so we're not telling you what can't go there. The developer agreement would just simply be agreeing that these are the things listed in that property. We would be agreeing to put something in these lists on that property. Would that be amenable for a development agreement?
Not at this time. Because we don't know, again, there, your C1A classification is your lowest-intensity commercial classification, and it's the lowest classification that is consistent with the commercial land use. We don't know yet what should be included or excluded from that list. We're happy to work through that as we have a site plan develop or any of those things. We can work through, you know, whether or not there needs to be additional buffers, whether or not there needs to be use restrictions and things of that nature. You have a, you have adopted a zoning classification that is, you know, to be applied in your commercial areas. You've developed a series of them. You have one that is the least intense and, you know, presumably prior councils, when they were adopting your zoning, when they were adopting your land use classifications, recognized these are the places that those can go throughout the city. You also have zoning regulations and land development regulations that establish buffers and landscape standards and everything else that define how uses should be separated based on intensity. We don't know if any of those things need to be modified based on the uses that may come in here. We do know that there's a list that you have, you know, determined as a city, you know, is the list of uses that are appropriate for lower-intensity commercial areas that would be consistent with the land use here. So it's hard to say we're going to, you know, kind of restrict or limit things when we don't know what will ultimately go in. we don't know what will ultimately go in. We're happy to have that conversation, and we have the opportunity to do development agreements as we define what's going to be moved forward with the property.
And I hear you, and that zoning would be lower-impact commercial, and I'm aware of what our legal obligations are as a council, but you're hearing the concerns of the residents in terms of what can go there. And I know that the list says what things can go by our codes, but knowing that Live Local trumps that, and that we have restrictions in regards to that legislation, my question to you is, would you be willing to take these concerns from these residents who live here in expressing, you know, what they want for their community and what's going to happen with that property, keeping in mind the people that do live here? And we appreciate the Carrasi family, but my understanding is they don't live here. And so, keeping in mind the people that have made this their home and that are going to be impacted by the development of this property, expressing to them, you know, trying to preserve what it is that you're asking for the rezoning, then keeping it that way?
Correct. And again, I will say it again, we're open to all of those conversations. We do want to respect the neighbors, we do want to respect our neighbors. It's unfortunate, you know, we hear a lot of the times that somebody will say, "I purchased my home, and I was told this was going to be preserve or conservation next to me." I can't tell you how many times I've heard that. If you look at the map, it's commercial. You know, it's been commercial for 35 years. So I think anybody that purchased in that area, you know, there was a map that said it was commercial, and it's been that way for 35 years. I think with regard to the specific concerns, you know, traffic, the concerns about impacts, the buffers and things of that nature, I have worked with your staff on and off for 15 years now with regard to various projects over time, and I know you have a good staff. And so I think that as we define a plan for what it will be under that zoning classification, I think there will be opportunities for us to say, "Okay, this is an area where we think there may be a need for additional buffering. We're going to look at a development agreement that helps to, you know, kind of define things or maybe eliminate uses, things of that nature." But it's, I think, premature to be able to say that without, you know, having the certainty of the zoning classification that we're developing a plan based on.
I think the buffering and other things are less of a concern for residents if it wasn't the potential of being an apartment complex, versus if it was low-density commercial. Those buffers would not nearly be as important, but that's strictly my opinion. Mayor, those are my questions.
Well, and with regard to Live Local, I mean, let me address that, because, you know, I think the, you know, we've struggled with this particular question in a lot of different communities since that act went into effect. You know, there's specific language that says you can't, in the act, that says you can't negotiate away for the applicability of the act to any property in the, you know, in the state. So I don't think there's a way to have an agreement that's enforceable, and I'll just be frank with you on it. I don't think there's a way to have an enforceable agreement that says, you know, we're negotiating away the right that the state statute allows. Again, that's just based on our review and dealing with the act in other jurisdictions. So.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you, Mr. Francis.
I don't have any questions for you. You can sit down.
Wait, wait, I just had the lights on. Mr. Gaylord.
Okay. My apologies.
Mr. Watts, I'd like to go back to the first slide of your presentation if we can. I'm going to echo the concerns that Ms. Adams and Mr. Francis brought up.
This one or that one?
Second slide.
Okay.
That one. So, I'm going to echo the concerns that they brought up and just, and basically just ask you a question. So, in one of the slides, I don't remember if it was this one or another slide, but on one of the slides, you mentioned that the intent of C-1A zoning is to provide businesses to serve the surrounding area. And I want to ask, is that the intent of your client?
Yes.
Or, so the intent of your client is to provide businesses to serve the surrounding area?
Our client's intent in being here tonight is to rezone to C-1A, which again-
That's not what I asked.
... with your staff, was to establish the lowest-intensity commercial uses-
Sure. I understand, I understand what the purpose of the meeting is, but my question specifically was, is the intent of your client to move to this zoning specifically to provide businesses to serve the surrounding area?
That's why we're asking for this, yes.
Okay. No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Your light is still on. Did you want to make a comment?
I'm waiting for our turn to speak.
Okay. This is it.
No. They have to read the, he has to read it first.
Yeah.
We're done with public comments.
Right. When you close public comments, then you'll do your ex parte disclosures.
I did. I closed public comment.
Yeah, but he's still doing his follow-up on public comments.
He's rebutted. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
And so before we go to board comments, where you discuss and debate, I'd like to remind you that this is a quasi-jurisdictional hearing, and one of the responsibilities that the council has in a quasi-jurisdictional hearing is to disclose any ex parte communications. We've all received emails that have been forwarded from the clerk. You've received dozens, if not hundreds, of them. Those are already on the record and therefore don't need to be specifically disclosed. However, any other communications you've had outside of the hearing or outside of these conversations with staff must be disclosed at this time, and then you can go to board comments and debate.
Okay. I know I've had phone call communications with Mr. Hampton, as well as Mr. Altrich, have both called me about this topic, just expressing their concerns and asking questions about the zoning process.
Mr. Francis, your light is still on. Mr. Bentley.
I've had numerous conversations with residents that sent out emails, mostly through phone. I called them and talked to them and talked through what we understood, the instructions or guidelines that we were given by our attorneys, and that was the gist of the conversations.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to disclose?
I had some conversation with Mr. Hampton and another resident outside the hall here. And that's all.
And I drive by the area every day, since I live in Westbrook, and I come out on Hollywood every day, and whatever goes there is going to be right in my face every day. So, yes, I've driven by the property numerous times. Those that left a phone number on their email, I tried to call, return calls to as many of them that left a phone number, and I also responded with emails. Again, I did that today, in fact. So, yes, that's my entire disclosure. Anyone else? Mr. Francis, your light is-
Do we need to disclose all of the response emails? You can pull all the response emails from my record, but I tried to respond to all of them.
Those should all have gone through the clerk and be recorded in the public records, and the applicant will have access to those if they want them.
Thank you. Mr. Francis?
Ma'am, I'll turn my light off when I get a chance to speak, when it's our turn. I'm just waiting to go.
Okay. Everyone got their disclosure. Everyone has done their disclosure. And we're going to read the ordinance, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number 2025-01, an ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, rezoning parcels of land located at the northeast and southeast corners of Hollywood Boulevard and Yborville Boulevard totaling 44-plus-or-minus acres, and as more fully described herein, from City of West Melbourne RA, Residential Agricultural to City of West Melbourne C-1A Professional Office and Services, and providing an effective date.
All right, thank you.
Just one second on that, because that is not the 44-plus acres.
So, that hasn't been determined yet?
Okay.
That'll be depending on what motion you all make at the end of the hearing.
So then you will have to just change that.
Yeah, it'll be adjusted accordingly for second reading.
I believe it's your turn now, Mr. Francis.
I'll turn my light off, Mayor. There you go. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I got quite a bit of stuff here. Maybe to start this off, the city attorney can let us know what he's told us all in private meetings of what we must do, and our options of what we can do. That way we can be open with everybody, so they know what we know.
Well, for starters, I need to be a little bit careful, because if, depending on how the board votes, if we get involved in a legal-
When the zoning came in, it went from agricultural, the residential agricultural, which they've had cows there for as long as I can remember, on at least the north side of the property. Back in 1990, the city voted and passed that it had a future land use of the C-1A.
Commercial. C-1A is the zoning category. They had a future land use of commercial.
Commercial, and now they're requesting C-1A to, it would move into that. That's the lowest possible commercial we could-
That's correct.
-approve. And we would be required to approve that portion of property that fell into that 1990 ordinance, correct?
The way I would answer that is Florida law creates a legal entitlement, once a future land use is granted, that the applicant can then get a zoning consistent with the future land use.
Which C-1A is consistent with the future land.
That's correct, and it's the lowest-density-intensity zoning that can be requested.
And we're required to meet that, correct?
The law provides a legal entitlement when you've-
I see a consistency with the lawyers here. With the portion of land that was surveyed and found to not be zoned, I don't know, it's a question for the city, or maybe the attorney, or maybe the city manager, compatible zoning for that, if we didn't go with what the property owner would like, would be res future or is consistent the R-2B zoning?
So assuming that, when you make a motion, that it's to exclude those two strips from being commercially zoned, there, in order to avoid spot zoning, there's really only one other possibility, and that would be a zoning consistent with the neighboring territory. As it is, that's two different zoning categories, because the zoning to the north of the north property is R-1A, and the zoning to the south of the south property is R-2. So, the only eligible zoning category is to avoid a spot zoning, which, as you know, is illegal in Florida, would be either the commercial to make it consistent with the entire parcel, or the neighboring residential zoning.
So if we went with option B, one would be R-1, and the other one would be R-2?
That's correct.
This doesn't have to go back to planning, since planning wasn't offered the option of A or B?
No, this doesn't, because you'll be rezoning the area that they've already contemplated. So, this isn't adding to what they've done. This is taking a little strip away from them, so they've already dealt with-
They made a recommendation based on information they didn't have, and I'm just-
That's correct.
I'm just curious.
There's no legal requirement to go back to PZB.
I think, oh, one more question for the attorney. The property agreement that the city asked for, if for some reason it went to Live Local, the, or the development agreement, I'm sorry, the development agreement is, it doesn't apply if it goes to Live Local, is that correct? That's what we were told by the attorney here.
Yeah. I don't necessarily want to agree or disagree with their interpretation, because that issue hasn't been litigated yet, to the best of my knowledge, and so I don't want to put myself in the place of a court, nor do I want to establish on the record what position I may have to take down the road if we get into that position.
So we don't know, basically?
Yeah, I mean, I imagine it'll be litigated at some point, and we'll have pretty clear direction from a court, but at this time, we don't.
And obviously, we know environmental issues don't come up until the property is ready for development, right? So, okay, so there's 45 feet of property to the north, 95.5 feet property to the south, which is 148,189 square feet of property. But we're right about that, right?
Plus or minus, yeah.
According to the numbers I got in my packet.
Yeah, yes. Give or take a foot or two.
So, in the city's mind, is that kind of, if it gets zoned as R-1 and R-2, is that developable property?
Developable in those zoning categories would be very challenging, because they're thin slivers, as opposed to a rectangle where you could have more flexibility, and so it could provide an opportunity for a buffer of 45 feet at the top and approximately 100 feet at the southern one.
So it would be an additional buffer to already what our code would require, right?
Depending upon which action the council took on those strips.
When you say "developable," though, I'd just caution that that could also include stormwater, which is technically development, but it wouldn't be any structures. So, like a retention pond, for example.
Yeah, I think we talked about that, too, in our meeting. It could be utilized as stormwater for the commercial property, or so they can combine the two?
No, I think they would have to have separate ponds on each of the parcels, but that's for the Water Management District to decide. You know, that's not really our jurisdiction.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-01 with the changes of going with option B, as presented by the city. And I would like two things noted. I'd like to, we're required, we're required to, once we know there's property that's not zoned, we're required to have that property zoned, correct?
Under the Land Development Act and in the Florida statutes, all property in the city has to have some sort of future land use and zoning.
So, am I appropriate to add to my motion that I want to set a time limit on when that additional property gets rezoned?
Yeah, I think so, as long as it's reasonable.
Months reasonable?
Like, for example, the next meeting, it wouldn't be possible, because there's too much-
Six months reasonable?
I think so.
I'll add six months to the motion that the property presented in option B be rezoned to the appropriate zoning, R-1, R-2, as you stated, if that's appropriate. Be done within six months. And I would also like it noted in my motion that if the property does wind up getting used for residential via Live Local, that the city requires appropriate land for the impact fees instead of impact fees. It's our option-
So, we're talking about-
Maybe you can clarify that a little bit more for me?
Yeah. What Councilmember Francis is referencing is, when there is any kind of residential development in the city, the city requires a impact in either, you can, the council has a choice of either getting a dollar amount for that impact, or that impact in land.
So I'd like it noted that in my motion that I want the city to ask for land instead of fees.
Yeah, and that ordinance does provide that, that's the exclusive determination of the city council, so it's not really something that the applicant can debate us on. If you want land-
All right, I just want to make that clear.
And, yeah, and that'll be noted on the motion for second reading.
On this, on with the motion.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
It's a little wordy.
All right, thank you, Mr. Francis. Ms. Volz?
Yes, I'm going to second that motion, and I agree with everything that you said on that.
Mr. Bentley.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I do want to ask a question of the attorney first. I know their lawyer wouldn't come up here and tell us the story, so is it, he made a comment on the Live Local, what comment did their attorney make on Live Local? I forgot. Had it written down? You don't know?
But they can move forward with it regardless of what-
No, I know that part.
That they have property, it's not an agreement.
Oh, that we couldn't, we can, yes. That we can't, I'm trying to get the wording right. I lost on that issue.
That's what the attorney said, it hasn't been litigated yet, and we don't know.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll go on with ours, maybe my thought will come back to me, sorry. Well, I've lived here since I was one-year-old. This is home to me, and I've been on the council 16 years. And let me ask the-
Seven, seven years?
Huh? So I want to ask the attorney, one, am I allowed to talk about some of the things that we've all discussed, but coming from me is different than coming from the attorney, because I don't put us, if there ever was a lawsuit involved, I won't put us at risk. So can I be more open, or am I allowed to?
I, I mean, the things you say can certainly be used in the lawsuit if it goes down that road. I, I just need to be careful that I can't, don't say anything.
Okay.
That I then have to contradict in my arguments to the court.
I'll try not to get us in trouble. No, I'm going to say some things because I'm just unhappy the way this is going.
We all are.
I know, I, I understand. So I would venture to say that 100%, I could be wrong, I haven't, we're not allowed to talk about it, but 100% of the council supports the residents of West Melbourne in this case and in most cases that I've been with up here. This is probably the first case that I've been in of 16 years of being up here that we were advised what the law is, to the degree that we've been advised what the law is on this case. And if we knowingly, here's where you better watch my words close. If we knowingly go against, we know what the law to be, the city could conceivably get in trouble. I'll word it that way. Is that too far?
No, no.
All right, let me keep going then. And if we knowingly do, here's where you're not going to like. If we knowingly do something that we're no, we're not supposed to do, insurance coverage could be an issue perhaps, right? Because we could, if we, if someone wanted to sue us and they brought a lawsuit, our insurance may not cover us, maybe, I don't know, in a case where we knowingly violated what some people believe to be the law. And I would never want to do that to my city. I would never want to put the city in jeopardy of almost unlimited damages. And I think all of our understanding, and your understanding too, because you guys have been to the meetings before this, the zoning committee meetings, they recommended that this go forward. Why do you think they recommended that when they had a room full of people that didn't want them to do it? That's what the law told them they had to do. Our staff, Kristi and her team really go by, you know, listen to the residents before they make a recommendation to us, and they know the, the will of the council and how we normally do things. And yet they recommended that we do this because they understand the law. And now you've got two folks up here that know they're going against the whole will of the room so far that have basically said by their vote that they're going to follow the law on this. And the thing I hate about this, I wasn't aware, A, that, I can make that one point, that, that live local had that one restriction, I wasn't aware of that. We'll get through my other notes here and see. I do appreciate what Mr. Frampis put in there because it's something I'd wanted to is to give the folks as much buffer as possible by not including the land at the north end and the south end. There's, you know, five acres or so on the top and the bottom, there are four or five acres, whatever it is, three acres each. So if they decide to go live local, we'll still have more of a buffer there than what we would have if we didn't claim that. So I would not personally be in favor of allowing them to do everything at once. I want those two areas broken out because I don't know what's going to happen to Atlanta, and none of us do. I do worry. I mean, I, I do worry, but I don't know what else we can do. I think the council in this case you're going to see is going to have to follow the law or what some folks' perception of the law is, and, and, and vote to do something that if any one of us could stop it, we would. And so, you know, I'm really sorry that it's going to, I think, go the way that I think it's going to go. And none of us want this, but legally, we can't put the city at risk to the degree that we would be putting the city at risk if we didn't obey the law or their perception of the law at this point. And I have a bunch more, but I think that's the gist of it, so I'm going to let it go so I don't get in too much more trouble. I can tell you, I can answer that. Everybody that left, and I'm going to ask all of you just in the future, and you say, well, you don't have to worry about that. Anybody that sent us an email, we responded to, and I know Ms. Adams did. And anybody that left a phone number that I called and explained all this to them, saying, look, you're going to be disappointed because if you went to the prior meeting, at the zoning meeting, they did the same thing. If you look at the documentation of who recommended this to us tonight, they did the same thing. And, and everybody that, by the way, that came to that zoning meeting, I stood outside the first time, I think there was a couple of them. I stood outside the first time and talked to everyone as they walked over, and I explained to them what we had explained to us and said, you know, we're on your side, we want this, but the law's not on our side on this.
Then why are you here? Why are you here?
To make this, this.
When you cannot. Do your hands.
I have to do what the law says.
But I think the law needs to be interpretive.
Well, we've got, I understand what you're saying, but we can be.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's move on. Ms. McGuire.
I'm going to let it go then.
Okay, so I.
So sir, sir, the, the council has the floor, sir, thank you.
Ms. McGuire.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So I have a question on the live local side of things. So does it, so if live local were enacted on this property, does it exempt or does it take away like certain codes that we have in the city? Like when they go to develop, do we still have the typical city buffers? Do we still have the typical like impact fees, those sorts of things? Or does it trump that?
Yeah, those things still apply. What doesn't apply is the, the height limits that are preempted, the density limits that are preempted, and, and then the obligation to at least consider a reduced parking requirement. The law doesn't say you have to approve one, but that the city would have to at least consider it. But otherwise, you know, it's really height and density that, as well as the multifamily nature of the property that's preempted, not all of the ancillary issues that go along with development. They would still need to meet setbacks and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Frampis.
I just wanted to comment on something that Mr. Bentley had mentioned. Ms. Volz and myself, we're on this motion, we're taking every possible thing we can squeeze out of this for the residents and applying it according to the law as it was explained to us, the state statute, which we are mandated to follow. So it wasn't, we were going against the residents. We heard what was said, and we're squeezing everything we can out of it in the motion that was made and seconded. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, also, I remember the comments, I wanted to make it. Last year, the council in West Melbourne, I think, made an ordinance that set, I don't know if you're, because I made an ordinance that said that if someone builds live local in West Melbourne, that they don't get the tax benefit from it. Is that?
Yeah, so there are two different things that we did. One of them is we enacted a moratorium for six months for, against live local projects so that we could develop a mixed-use ordinance. The Live Local Act provides that certain cities that have low, low acreage in terms of commercial and industrial, and we do qualify under that because we're mostly a residential city, are allowed to enforce mixed-use requirements, which would mean there's some commercial and reduced residential. And so you all passed the ordinance that did that last, or was it last year in the summer? Yeah, in May. And so we can now enforce that if that's what's brought forward. The other thing is you approved a resolution that eliminates the tax abatement for any, any property that would want to apply for that. The, the law was amended last year to allow local governments who have a surplus of housing as defined by a University of Florida study to exempt from the tax benefits any live local projects. We did qualify in this market, and so you passed a resolution last year that would eliminate that incentive.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Anyone else want to make any comments? All right, so we, I would like to make a comment. The two, when, when I was, when we were at the office and we were talking there, it wasn't determined at that time, we didn't have the answer. The two strips, did they have zoning or didn't they? But it was said earlier that they retained the county's zoning. If they don't have a zone, then they retain what they came, what they annexed into the city with, which at that point is agricultural.
Right, so they don't have city zoning or future land use currently because of the error that was made by their surveyor 35 years ago.
So if we, so Plan B, what we have here, what we're talking about, is changing those two strips to R-1A, so it is consistent with man, with the.
The one on the north would be R-1A, the one on the south would be R-2.
All right, and then, so it is consistent with the properties around them, so it is residential. If we didn't do that and we just left them the way it is, it would remain agricultural the way it is.
It couldn't.
You can't leave it the way it is, we have to change it. Because, and that was my next question, because it would not, it would no longer be consistent.
Yeah, we, the reason it retained agricultural zoning up to this point is because it had West Melbourne zoning. We assumed that West Melbourne zoning applied across the entire parcel because we relied on the, the survey that was provided by the applicant at the time, which again was 35 years ago. And we have found out within the past couple of weeks, based on the objection that Mr. Frampis had last time we were here, we investigated it, as we've already discussed, discovered that those areas do not have city future land use or zoning. So they technically have county, but that's, we're not allowed to keep county future land use or zoning. Now that we know of the discrepancy, we have to, we're obligated to fix it.
We have to fix it. All right, can you go back to the, to the screen that shows the two slivers? The one at the north and the south end? So then the, the property at the north end then that abuts to West Melbourne Landings, that's going to have an additional 45-foot buffer or?
Yeah, so the northern, the northern strip, because it's only 45 feet wide, couldn't possibly meet any of the development standards to create developable lots. It's just too small. They couldn't meet the setbacks, and the city code wouldn't allow it. Also, the R-1B, and I, I made a mistake, it's R-1B that's immediately adjacent. That zoning category is actually frozen. The city passed an ordinance to freeze it, meaning there can't be any more development on R-1B properties. Development that already exists can obviously stay with those standards, but, but they couldn't develop under the R-1B zoning anyways. So, so yeah, that, that area would definitely be some sort of a buffer. There's really nothing else they could do with that.
It would be 45 feet between the retention area that they already have and whatever happens to be built there. And it's an additional 45 feet of buffer there. And then the property that then abuts to Manchester Lakes on the south side, they have an additional 99 and a half feet of additional buffer in addition to the retention area that they already have. So now they, and plus they're going to have setbacks on whatever is built there, there'll be additional setbacks. So there's going to be quite a distance between West Melbourne Landings and also Manchester Lakes before you even see anything that is built on that property, regardless of what it happens to be. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It's a much larger buffer than we would normally be able to offer.
So the only kind of compromise we have here, because we are required by law to, we have to match the future land use that they were given 30 years ago. We have, we're just doing the paperwork now, we're finishing that up. But this is kind of a bonus because we did not know about this additional two strips of land when we were at our last meeting. So thank you, Mr. Frampis and the rest of council for putting this up, having the, the survey done and, and talking about it now rather than making the decision the last time. So I just want to make sure that I've got this correct and that, so that the public knows that it's a compromise. Neither party is getting exactly what they want, but it is kind of a, something that we can live with, and it is a benefit to residents that this is even further away from them than what we had thought it was going to be. That is correct? All right, so that's my comment. No other comments? We have a motion by, we have a motion by Mr. Frampis, and we have a second by Ms. Volz. All those in favor of going with the 40.6 acres we're talking about at this time for option B? All right, signify by saying aye? Aye? Those opposed, signify by saying nay? All right, all in favor say nay? I mean, all in favor say aye? Aye? Those opposed say nay? Motion carries 7-0.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
Just wanted to point out that we, we, the city council always meets on the first and third Tuesday of the month with one exception, when there's an election. And so our next meeting is not April fir, it's not Tuesday, April 1st. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, April 2nd, because this room is used for the election. So there's a primary election in Brevard County. So our meetings that are normally on the first and third are not on April 1st. It will be on April 2nd.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next.
Madam Mayor, can we take a five?
Please, let's take a five-minute break.
Accounting Operations Manager spends about three months like living and breathing this. So, very appreciative of Ms. Sonia Banks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lindsay Avilas. I am the new audit partner that took over for Debbie Good. She was the audit partner before, but she retired last fall. So finally, we didn't think it would actually happen, but she finally retired. And so, I was the audit partner this year, and I have with me also Keith Smith. He was in charge on the audit, so he ran most of the audit testing and field work. And I wanted to also thank Candace and her team. We've been in her hair, just causing her a lot of headache with our requests, but everything went very smoothly. So, I know you have the report in front of you. It's very thick, and you've gotten a chance to look over the PDF, but I'm going to try to go over it very high level. And then, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me or save them until the end. So, first of all, if you flip to page 13, that is our audit opinion report. Okay, and so, yes, the, yep, the thick binder. And if you look at the very beginning of the audit report, there's two paragraphs opinions. So, we have a clean audit opinion this year over the city's September 30th, 2024 financial.
Um, can I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Volz, you have a question?
Okay, on a page 12, 8812, under, um, this is starting under, it says, "Management assumes full responsibility," and goes on. And then it says, "The objective is to provide reasonable, rather than absolute assurance that the financial statements are free of any material misstatements." That does not make me feel very comfortable, the way that is stated in there. It's like, well, there may be some misstatements in there, and maybe it's not all right.
This is a standard audit opinion that every government would be issued if it's a full, clean, unmodified opinion. So, it is a standard language. We can't modify the way from the AICPA like that. But I see your concern, and we do dig into the numbers very much so. And this is an opinion that the financials are not materially misstated. Now, are there $1,000 area errors? There could be. But $1,000 is certainly not material to the city. But we do a lot of detailed testing, and we are looking for any material misstatements under general accounting standards, GAAP, and also under government auditing standards, so. All right. So, that is our audit report, our audit opinion. If you go to page 17, this is the beginning of the management's discussion and analysis. It is a very in-depth report. If you haven't gotten a chance to read through it, I definitely recommend. It's good reading because it has comparative information with the prior year, 2023, compared to 2024, and what's changed. So, it's very comprehensive. I will not read it word forward, though. I'm going to skip to page 30. That's where the actual financial statements begin. And so, there are two sets of financial statements that the city has. There is the government-wide financial statements, which are the statement of net position. You have long-term assets and long-term liabilities that are reported at the government-wide level. So, that is page 30 and 31. And so, if you go to the bottom of page 31, your city ended the total net position on the bottom right at 156.6 million. And of that 156 million, if you look up a little bit to the net investment and capital assets number, just under 84 million. That is 54% of your net position is invested in capital assets in the city. There are some restrictions for stormwater, community development, and some other items, and that makes up 11.6% of your net position. And then, at the very bottom before the total, the unrestricted net position is just under 54 million at the end of 2024. And that is 34.4%, as I said. If you go to the next page, 32 and 33, this is sort of like an income statement, also at the government-wide level. It's formatted strangely because that's just how government auditing standards require it. But if you look at the bottom of page 33, you see that 156.6 million ending net position. But a couple lines above it, there's a change in net position. This is like your net income for the year at the government-wide level, and that is just over 20 million. And so, you had basically a net income, had to do with a lot of increases in capital grants and contributions, some payments and leave taxes, some unrestricted investment earnings this year. So, there was a large increase to the net position this year. If you go to page 34 through 36, starting with 34 and 35, this is the fund-level financials. So, this is the other set of financials. I was talking about how there's two sets. This is the fund level that you budget at. It's more short-term focused. You're not going to see capital assets on the governmental funds. You're not going to see long-term debt and things like that reported here. It's only more short-term focused, and that is how government auditing standards are. So, if you look at the second page, 35, you see your general fund. It's that first column, the largest column. And your unassigned fund balance at the end of the year was just under 21 million. It's 20.8 million. And the unassigned, I'm sorry, the total fund balance is 30 million, but the unassigned portion of it in the line above it is 20.8 million. So, you have an unassigned portion of your general fund balance of 60% of the total fund balance. There are some non-spendable items and some restrictions up above for the police education and confiscated funds, transportation, building code enforcement, things like that. That is an increase this year of 5.4 million compared to last year in your general fund. The general fund also had its own net income at the fund level. I do want to note that your general fund has a minimum fund balance requirement that you all have enacted, and that is, it's a calculation of 20% of expenditures minus some capital outlay. It would be about 2.9 million would be your minimum. So, you're well above the minimum at your 20 million, about seven times higher than the minimum at the end of the year. So, very healthy unassigned fund balance. I will go next to the, the Police Officers Pension Trust Fund. That is on page 44 and 45. So, this is a fiduciary fund that the city reports. And if you look at the bottom of page 45, you'll see that the fiduciary net position ended at just under 23 million. That was an increase of 3.6 million this year. So, it had a nice, healthy increase. A lot of it, if you look in the middle of the page, was the total investment gains, almost 3.8 million. So, there's a lot of investment income in the fiduciary fund, so that's great. On 47 starts the footnotes, and there's a ton of information in here. It goes really into detail, into capital assets, pensions, things like that. But I am going to skip to some of the more important, bless you. Notes I think you'll find interesting on page 99, this is Note 3G, Subsequent Events. You may have already noticed when you're looking at the government-wide financials, the debt isn't as high as you may have expected because just after year-end, and we note it as a subsequent event, there was a revenue bond of 54 million that was approved. So, it is not in the numbers yet because that was after year-end. But we do disclose it, and that is because the city did have some new revenue bonds approved for the water treatment plant. And so, that will have a large impact on next year's financials, but it's not recorded yet.
Mayor, if I can ask a question?
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Just to clarify on your statement, because we did additional water bonds, those will be applying to the following year?
Yes.
Okay.
They won't be recorded yet here, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And so, that's all I'm going to go over for the notes. Next, I was going to go over something interesting in the required supplementary information. There is a lot of required schedules in the RSI, we call it, for changes in the net pension liability, the Florida retirement system, other post-employment benefits. If you look at page 106, this is the Police Officers Pension Plan. And so, as I mentioned earlier, there was a net position ending at 23 million. If you look towards the bottom of that table, but before the fiduciary percentage, 100.92, you'll see that there's like a negative 209,000. So, you actually ended with a planned pension asset, like it flipped from a liability to an asset because it was funded at 100.92% as of September 30th. So, you actually became, you know, more than funded at that point in time. If you look, though, there are 10 years' worth of data here. You see in 2021, it also was above 100%. 2017 is also above 100%. One of the main factors that causes it to flip to over 100% has to do with the market return. When the market is returning really good, you don't have to contribute as much to the pension. And then, the pension often has a lower liability, and it flips to an asset on the city's books. So, it could easily flip, like I don't know what it would be today. Your actuary calculates all that kind of thing. But it was nice to see that it flipped to an asset at September 30th. Let's see. Next, I'm going to go to some of the reports in the back. We do have some audit reports in the back over internal controls and also over the single audit. We start at page 155. This is our auditor's report over the internal controls of the city. So, as part of our audit, we do also look at the city's internal controls, making sure that they have segregation and duties in place of all the finance staff and other departments, making sure no one has the ability to have too much money at their disposal, and they could steal it, basically. So, we look at internal controls, and we make sure that there are controls in place, and we have a clean audit report on that. So, that's great. We do note at the bottom of 155, and I'll get to this. There's a couple of management findings we had, nothing major, but we do note them later in the report. But overall, clean audit opinion. Page 157, this is a very similar report, but this is over the uniform guidance. So, because your city spent over 750,000 in federal grants, you were required to have a single audit, which you actually spent 9 million, so you're way over the threshold. And so, what we do is we calculate the major funds, depending on the different grants that you had, that you spent this year. And we determine the major programs. You had two major grants that required us to dig in and test the grants, make sure the city is in compliance with those grants. So, we also have a clean audit opinion on that. But again, we have a finding that we did note, so I'll get to that. If you go to page 170, whoops, sorry, let me go back. If you go to page 167, this is the corrective action plan of the city. So, the first finding, oh, one, is proper cutoff. So, there were a couple of smaller grants, not the two that we audited, that had some cutoff issues where there was about $87,000 that belonged in prior year, and then 200,000 that belonged, that wasn't recorded this year, that belonged, it was recorded next year, but we recorded it in this fiscal year. It was some smaller grants that, because of the timing of when the funds were requested for reimbursement, it gets a little convoluted, like which fiscal year they belong in. But according to auditing standard, the funds belong in the year that you spent the money. So, we had to do some corrections to fix it, to make sure that they're spent in this fiscal year and they're recorded as revenue. So, that's the cutoff finding. At the very bottom of page 167, but it goes on to the next page, inventory management. We had a finding that there was some inventory that was determined to, at first, not be material. And then, around November, December, when we were beginning the audit, it was learned that the inventory balance was material, account had to be scheduled, and we had to come out and do test counts, and Keith did that. And so, there was a small balance difference with, we had to back into the September 30th balance, but because there was no official count at September 30th, we recorded as a past audit adjustment. We're not going to require the city to actually make the adjustment because it's an estimate. And there was actually no count at September 30th because the count was late. So, we have a finding that we just recommend the city have some more controls around the inventory counting and making sure that this is captured more timely. And the city's already implementing that, so. And then, also on page...
If I could just touch on that real quick. What this is a reference to is our water department has, our water department has equipment, parts, pieces, you know, valves, everything from pipe to, down to little nuts and bolts. And unfortunately, we did not do that as timely as we would have liked. And that was pointed out by the auditor and discussions internally with the team. We are going to go forward and purchase a, some software that can account for those parts and pieces. Right now, we're just doing manual counts of everything coming in and out. And because the volume of the water department is getting larger and larger, it's time for us to implement actual software that can start tracking all those parts and pieces. And so, while we never like negative comments from our auditor, it was a fair comment, and it's something that, you know, we take pretty serious. We want to make sure, you know, there's no thought internally with the organization that anything has disappeared. But we want to be able to account for all the parts and pieces that are coming in and out of the water department.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, because I noticed on the pages that you referenced from, I think it's 167, 168, we're talking about the recommendations for corrective action. I'm noticing there's more than one in regards to the grants administrator position that's been created for the city. So, with that in mind, there are some policies and processes that have been documented that will be done come September 2025, if I'm looking at the dates correctly, for those processes in place. So, is that enough as we move forward? Are those processes only being, it says that Ms. Blake is the responsible party for those. Is that being created by Ms. Blake? Is that a process or a policy that has to be evaluated by the entire department or city leadership? Just in terms of making sure that we have the right corrective action for it?
Yes, certainly our grants manager position is going to help greatly with that. What, you know, the details of this finding is, there was a couple of reports that were required. You know, grant agencies have monthly updates, quarterly updates, and some of those reports were a few days late. And so, that just kind of comes to, you know, some oversight by me that we didn't get those out in time. And so, the grants manager has helped tremendously in that category, having somebody who's dedicated to keeping track of those dates and able to get me stuff to sign timely and work through that process. And so, while unfortunately, our finance director's name is on that, that's just fell to that position, it really falls to me to make sure that those get out on time.
Understood. So, we already have the processes in place addressing this.
We've implemented the policies to be able to make sure that everything gets out in time. And while it's a finding, it is, you know, the practical side of it. And all findings are, I'm not arguing, all findings are, that's what we pay to have done. These findings in particular had to do with paperwork being a couple of days late. So, it's not like we ignored the grants, or it's not like we got threatening letters that, you know, if we don't hear from you, we're canceling these grants. These are just paperwork items.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the bottom of page 168, that third comment about timely report submission, some of the reports were late, like you said, just by a couple of days. But Finance Department was in regular contact with the granting agency. There was never any risk of losing grant funding because of it. So, it wasn't a concern, but just because we can't say it was timely reported, and that's a compliance requirement, we have to have the finding for it. But I do believe that with the new grants position, I think that the city is in a really good place to be able to clear these findings next year.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Okay, so, and then we have a couple of other, more minimal findings. If you go to page 171, so these are not related to the single audit or the grants. This is more just overall, top of page 171. This is a comment repeated from last year, the unexpendable balance of the building permits. There's nothing really you can do. This is a Florida statute. You're doing what you can to spend the balance down, and you have plans to spend the balance down. So, it's just, we just have to keep, like, saying it every year. But I know the city is well aware, so. Bottom of page 171, building code enforcement fund balance. As part of our audit, we make sure that the restrictions that I talked about earlier, where there's like the unassigned, and there's restricted amounts, non-spendable, we look really into detail at those. And there was just a calculation error for the building code enforcement fund balance. But because it was a restriction, and that's something that shows up on the face of the financial statements, we noted that just as a minimal finding, and it has been corrected in the financial statements. If you go to page 172, middle of the page, the sixth finding is the loss on disposal of fixed assets. There was a very kind of unusual entry because of some, some old inventory that needed to be disposed of. Ended up being a value of 351,000, but I think it was very old. And so, it just was a sort of a cleanup entry, but it was recorded in revenues, netting with revenues, and that's not technically like where it should be recorded. So, as part of our audit, we had an audit adjustment, just moving it to the correct place, so it'd be shown correctly on the face of the financials. So, again, it's an improvement point. That's like the lowest kind of finding. It's just a minimal. Just because we had an entry, we can't, we have to be independent, and we can't come in and fix your financials. So, when we have entries, we have to have something to kind of go along with it. Unless it's immaterial, then we can get away with, like, not having a finding. But it was 300,000, so we had to say something about it.
What was the appropriate account?
It was a loss on disposal, yeah. But it was up in revenues, yeah.
Yeah, this was the item that we brought to the council five, six months ago.
Right.
That old water department software system that just had, had got put on the books and was an oversight that we never got it off the books. And it's from, and it's not even the last water department software. It's the software before that. And so, again, that was an item we're just trying to clean up and get off the books.
Mm-hmm, yep. So, yeah, it was correctly approved and everything, and so, no concerns there, that it was removed. So, that's all I have for the financial statements. Next, I was going to go to the required communication letter. It's like a separate, smaller letter that goes on with the audit.
Can I just ask you a question on the report? You said four or five times that it was a clean report, but then you went ahead and told us all the things we did wrong. So, is it clean or is it not clean?
You can have a clean report with some findings.
Like, we got dinged last year, and they said, you gotta get dinged for the building fees that we have too much of, and so therefore, it made it not a clean report.
No, it's...
Confused on the term.
I understand. There's different levels of findings. When we don't have a clean report, you will know it, like the audit report opinion changes. It's a modified report. There's a big paragraph at the beginning that says why it's not a clean audit. Like, the state will definitely see it and read it, and they'll know it. So, the report format totally changes. These findings are small enough and minimal enough, and also, sometimes dollar amount, there was a dollar amount threshold based on materiality, but also just based on qualitatively, like what it is. And is it like so scary of a finding that we're not sure that there could be other errors? You know, that's when you get into considering qualifying an audit opinion. And I had to qualify an audit opinion last year on a different city. So, it happens. It really does. But it's got to be pretty bad, like a pretty serious issue. These findings are not that.
Candace, you can stay.
So, all right, any other questions on the audit? The ACFA itself, we call it the ACFA. It's a long name. All right, so if you go to the required communication letter, this is just a letter that we, we already gave it to management, and I already went over it with management. But it's just kind of a letter going over, like, our audit, if we had any issues, any disagreements. We didn't have anything like that. If you go to page 14 and 15, this just kind of lists some of, so those findings had adjustments with them, I mentioned earlier. So, you'll see on page 14, these are some of those audit adjustments we had. So, there's like the grant moving, the grant income. It was specifically an FDEP grant, not the two grants that we audited as part of a single audit, just moving a couple, a little bit of money with the grant revenues there. And then, the building code restricted fund balance reclass, and then also the loss on disposal of assets. So, those are the three entries that go along with that. And if you go to page 15, there are two past audit adjustments. The second one is what I mentioned with the inventory count being later and that there was, when we backed it into September 30th, there was a small difference. But because there wasn't really a count at September 30th, you can't be sure that that number is accurate. It's kind of more of an estimate. So, totally fine with the city passing on it. The one above it is an issue that's come up on a lot of cities this year. So, there's a Department of Revenue website that we go to where we get the third-party confirmation of all those revenues and receivables of various taxes. So, there's the gas tax, telecommunications tax, a few other things. And so, this year, the Florida's website reporting got a lot better. And you can actually see that, it was unclear before if there's one month of receivable at year-end or two months, like how long it takes to get from the state and filter down to the city. And so, some cities recorded one month, and that's what West Moeburn has done historically. Some cities recorded two months. You can't really say either way is wrong. But this year, the state's reporting actually shows that if it was received by the city in September, it was for two months prior. Like, you can see that they received the tax monies, and then a month goes by, and then they remit it to the city, another month goes by. So, there should be two months. So, not the fault of the city at all. We've actually had four or five other clients who were like, let's all get on the same page here. And I showed them the reporting. They're like, oh, my gosh, I see what you mean. Like, it is kind of clear now. Like, that report did not exist before. So, this is like smoothing it out where some of it's being recorded in the current year, and then the rest is going to be recorded in '25 to true it up. We also didn't want to throw off your budgeting because then it would cause a giant, if you record it all in one year, it causes a giant budget-to-actual difference. And so, it's a little easier if you just kind of smooth it out because it is an estimate. It's when the state remits the funds to you, and it's something that you couldn't really nail down in the past. I remember researching it years ago, and I couldn't, like, come to a definite answer. But now, the state's reporting has gotten better. So, we're just trying to catch it up so that all the cities are on the same page. And like I said, like, we had other clients that were like, oh, totally fine with recording it, and just makes things easier if we're all kind of on the same page. So, that's the story behind that. And that's all I have for my presentation. If, any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Frampton.
I had one more question I forgot to ask you. When you talked about the Police Pension Fund being funded at 100.92%, you said a lot of times the cities turn down, reduce the funding.
Oh, it depends on the actuary report, the required city contribution is what I was referring to.
So, who makes that recommendation to the city to do that? You guys don't, right?
No, we don't do that, no.
It's the actuary?
It's the actuary, yep. They calculate it in their report, and they take all the market returns into account in their actuary analysis and their calculation. And then, we obtain the actuary reports from them.
And I know it's kind of unusual to even have 100% funding. Do you guys, do we get penalized at all for having too much in there at all? I mean, we could keep funding it at the current levels?
I've seen other cities even fund their OPEB, which is like very, very rare. But you can do it if you want to, but, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. Any other questions? No? All right, thank you. There's no action required on this. We're just supposed to receive it. That's it.
Yep, we would just ask that you take a vote that, receiving and filing the 23, 24 audit.
Mr. Bentley?
I'd make a motion we receive and whatever else he said on the finance report from our auditor.
Thank you. Ms. Adams?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion, Mr. Bentley. We have a second from Ms. Adams. All those in favor of receiving the annual comprehensive financial report signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. It was a good report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
All right, Chief Vestal, Purchase Police Department In-Car Camera and Body Camera Systems.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. So, coming here tonight, looking to get approval to purchase five new in-car camera and body car camera systems. Just as a little bit of background, a couple of years ago, we, WatchGuard, which is our current provider, we were notified that the EL4 system was going out of service. And in the meantime, around that time, they had also been bought by Motorola. So, the company was continuing, but they were going to be phasing out the EL4 system. Last calendar year, we worked with IT and several vendors to field test and evaluate several different vendors. I think we included Panasonic, Utility, Axon, Motorola, some of the leading contenders, especially for the body camera side, which captures so many of our encounters. So, in doing that, we not only settled that Motorola was the preferred product as far as officer feedback and ease of use, but the best thing is, it's also compatible with, for us to be able to save our old data. So, there are certain requirements for the data retention and storage that allowed us to continue to move to this new system at a, there had to be some software upgrades on the IT side, but we're able to access all our data in all the same platform. And the IT department hosts that internally. We don't do that through, some of the companies, you pay a lot for the online data storage, and we were able to avoid that with this. So, based upon that, what we're looking to do is get approval for five in-car camera systems and five body camera systems that will go into the five vehicles that we ordered last October after council approval. And the total amount of that is $40,326.
All right, thank you. Wishes of the council? Need a light? Ms. Volz?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Sir, Ms. McGuire?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve from Ms. Volz, and we have a second by Ms. McGuire. All those in favor of purchasing the new police in-car camera system signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries 7- Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, chief. Thank you. Item C, interlocal agreement with the construction and maintenance of Sheridan Road.
Sidewalk.
The Sheridan Road.
Yeah, I had to make a little tweak to the agenda item.
Maintenance of Sheridan Road.
A portion. So anyway, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Here to present the Sheridan Road sidewalk item. This is an interlocal agreement with Brevard County, who's had this project underway for quite some time. They constructed phase one of this project in 2017, 2018, for about half of the length of the run for Sheridan Road from roads to, so John Roads to the west entrance of Sylvan Drive. So the phase two, they've asked us to partner with them on funding a portion of that sidewalk extension to reach Wickham. The portion, a portion that's within West Melbourne jurisdiction, about 1,300 feet, shown there on page 8C2, the yellow highlight. We have budgeted 370,000 in the FY25 budget for this. It goes along nicely with one of the current council priorities of improving sidewalks throughout the city. They are complete with design on this project and will be bidding that out this summer. We'll have an opportunity to include the West Melbourne portion or decline after bids are received, so that'll come back before you for approval. This is just approving the interlocal agreement for the partnership with them on the project. So I'd recommend authorizing the city manager to sign the interlocal agreement on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you. Ms. Volz?
Well, sorry, but I will approve. I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Ms. Volz. We have a second by Mr. Gaylord?
Yeah, I'd like a second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gaylord. All right, thank you. All those in favor of authorizing the city manager to sign the interlocal agreement, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Council reports, Ms. Volz.
I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one item. We have five people that are going to the conference in Tallahassee next week, I think it is. And we currently have a rule that says that you can't take a city car out of the county limits or whatever it is. But if we stay within the guideline that we currently have, it's going to cost us 3,200 bucks if you pay mileage for five different people to go. I talked to Mr. Rhodey, and I think he said that they could make two city cars available, and then we wouldn't get paid for mileage, that it would just cover the gas and and let the five members ride in those two city vehicles. And that he wanted me, I guess, to bring it up in this session and get, I guess, at least four head nods to say, yeah, that makes financial sense to do.
Everybody spending the same amount of time up there?
We think so. I think.
If the five people going up are committing to it, yes. If not.
No, there are five people that are going, period. It's just one may come back a few hours difference.
I know that five are going. I mean, if if all five of those commit, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, right. I agree with you.
Not going, so I'm kind of.
Right. I agree with you. And and that's true. So I guess what Mr. Rhodey wanted was four people just to shake their head at him and say, yeah, that makes sense to us to save the money.
Yeah, we'll make sure two pool cars are all gassed up and ready to go.
Do you know what it would, just at a ballpark, what it would cost for the gas for the two cars? For the cars to get out there, for two cars of the city type versus the 3250 that Mr. Bentley has calculated?
Less than 3250.
Less than, I was just looking for a difference, but I'll take that.
I'm guessing probably you should be able to get, you're looking at probably having to fill up each car twice to get it back here.
Card and just do it as they go?
Yep, or it could be reimbursed. It's, you know, I just think this is a very unusual, you know, event in that it's the up in Tallahassee and the council's going up there to to talk to our legislatures to try to, you know, either get grant funding or talk about current bills that are up there. And so unusual circumstance, and so that we can certainly make the vehicles available and get everybody up there and back.
And I go up there, because my son lives up there, and we go up somewhat frequently. For our minivan, it's about $50 each way. So if the SUVs, it might be a little bit more, but my estimate for two cars would be about $300 versus 3,000 something, so.
Pat, did the five people already agree? Yeah, okay.
Okay, all right, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Austin, Mr. Gaylord?
Yeah, just wanted to mention that the planning and zoning board went very well, so I enjoyed covering for that. And also, I'm very disappointed that Ms. Volz didn't mention that we had a wonderful time dancing in a jail cell on Cops of the Coop. It was a, it was a great little event for Special Olympics, so we had a, we had a grand old time dancing in there for a couple hours and really, really thankful for everyone that came out and really helped that cause, so that's all I have.
Yes. Do we know how much money we raised?
We do.
$4,895,000.
Wow. Good. Good.
Approximately.
All right, is that your report, Mr. Gaylord? All right, thank you. Ms. Maguire?
So I was just actually up in Tallahassee this past week with the joint chamber trip that we do every year, and I will be going back again for us. But one of the things that I thought was worth bringing up from our conversations that we had with our legislators up there already, is they have, some of them have said that they've kind of hit a point where they understand that the traffic is, you know, in a sense horrendous here in Brevard, and they're starting to look at alternative ways to improve the traffic. One of the examples they gave was talking to the, like, the engineering firms to see if they're willing to go to like a shift schedule to try to make it so that not everybody from all of the engineering firms are getting on the road at the exact same time, to go to work at the exact same time. So I just thought it was worth noting that, you know, even they're trying to find ways to work on it from up there as well. And that's my report.
All right, thank you. Ms. Adams?
I think it's Mr. Frampton.
I skipped Mr. Frampton. How could I do that?
Do I need to have my light on?
Yes, I guess you do. Mr. Frampton, please enlighten us.
The only thing I have, Mayor, thank you, is just so the audience knows, I was also at Cops on the Coop, and that is a Special Olympics fundraiser that we do. And the chief, the four of us were, they had a little cell set up, and we were locked up, and you had to collect funds to get out of jail. So it was, it was nice spending the evening in jail with these fine people, and it was for a good cause. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize, I'm sorry. Now, Ms. Adams?
I also had Cops of the, Cops on the Coop on my agenda and recap, more so not only to give the dollar amount, but I'm sure, I mean, chief, we're $5 short of the next 100, so are you, are you still accepting money for Special Olympics? All right, always. I like that answer. I'm also reminding council, a few weeks ago, I had invited everybody to New Life Mission's Community Care and Share event. So just reminding you for your calendar purposes, that's April 10th and 11th. Not attending both, they are both the same program, so if you wish to attend, you can choose one or the other. So just making you aware of that, should you wish to attend. It is at the Hilton Melbourne. So they they support homeless women in our community with children.
Right. Can you have her send up?
I can.
Dates and times and stuff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So I was not able to do Cops in the Coop, but I was able Friday to go to the, to the dinner that we were invited to by Judge McGee. So I was very happy to go to that. It was a lovely event. I was not able to stay for the whole event, but it was, it was very nice. So I didn't make Cops on the Coop, but I did happen to make that one. I wanted to mention that when we do go up to Tallahassee, when we check out on Wednesday, we check out at 11:00. And on that particular day, I have a meeting up there at noon, and this goes from noon to 2:00, for the League of Mayors. And I'm looking now at the, at the agenda for that, and it looks like I am the only candidate to be on that board. The other person from Melbourne Beach did not put her application, and so it is just me. So I'm very happy. So that shouldn't take so long. So I'm very happy about that. But that's kind of throwing a wrench in it, because I will have to leave late, yes. So, or a walk, yes. So I'm just letting you know, unless, unless you have some kind of touristy thing that you want to do up in Tallahassee for those three hours while, from noon till 2:00, if you guys check out at 11:00, yes. So that's it. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. So if I was riding with you, you know you'd be delayed. That's it. That is my report.
Can I just add something?
Yes.
You said that's for the city mayors?
That's for the League of Mayors.
League of Mayors. Now, the deputy.
The deputy mayor can attend with you. I don't know if he wants to, but I attended before with with Hal. And and probably the other members could sit in on the meeting if they wanted to, but they can actually go with you if they wanted to see what's going on.
Okay, well, I had never been, so I'm looking forward to it. So, and I'll bring back my report for that. Okay, management reports. Mr. Rhodey?
Just one quick item, two quick, two quick items. Want to thank the mayor and thank West Melbourne Business Association. Several of us were out at their last meeting, and they had really good attendance at Fifth Third's Bank. I think Deputy Mayor was there. Helen, Councilwoman Volz was there, and Mayor did a great job talking, talking good things about West Melbourne. And so that was, that was a good event. It's good to see that group back together and trying to get their feet under them again and move forward. And then the second event is, we're looking at two dates to have our follow-up and try to close out the council retreat. And so Megan will be emailing out and trying to coordinate schedules.